A student can do this at any point in time. And they have a number of opportunities to do it, too.
When do they typically take it? When they're in...
They're going to register. So when they come in for college.
So, August typically?
All year round.
So actually, to be honest with you, one of the worst things that we do is we have this high-stakes placement test that students take cold. They come in, they have not studied, they haven't prepared, they don't know what the test looks like. They sit down, they get a few questions in.
Exactly.
The test actually, yes. So we need to do a better job.
So, Dr. Maleko could facilitate this and we could instantly improve our results if, before those students get here.
Just doing a primer.
In May or June. Or, forget a primer. If they took that same exam in May or June.
They would do better.
When they're fresh. Do we know what summer learning loss is?
Yep, there's a melt. There's certainly a melt.
I couldn't pass any of those exams, but I'm still fairly adequate in society. So, the exam... Thank you, somebody got a little sarcasm there. So, I mean, the exam, you know, it does a certain thing and with a little bit of refresher, people can pass it. So, the next question is, I mean, besides facilitating better results for ourselves, it's just like teaching what's on a test. I mean, our whole curriculum can't be teaching to the test, but we don't want to teach something completely different. We sabotage ourselves. And that's at the P-12 level. That's why those things have to be synced. So, I'd like to see, I mean, we already know what many of the students who are coming here before they graduate. Why don't we have them take the test when they can be more successful at it? That's number one. And then, number two, if there... Is there a group of students that are relatively close? Now, I can think of examples of when my daughter graduated, kids that... And things have changed a little bit, but they had algebra a while ago. They come, and they haven't had it recently. They're going into nursing. They're not really worried about math. They come, they're relatively close on the placement test. Can they do a refresher and retest?
Absolutely. So, we do the boot camp type of thing. Even better than that, the student starts in a math course. We take the first couple of weeks to actually ascertain as to whether or not that's the right math course for the student. And we will transfer them, or within a few weeks, sometimes we can get them leaped above to the next level and we'll make the adjustment for them. We don't want anyone to spend time in a course that is not relevant, you know, to them or to their work. And everything you talk about is absolutely within our power to do. The other thing that we've taken to doing is, rather than just measuring the student by their placement on an Accuplacer test, we're looking more holistically with multiple measures. In other words, we will take into consideration what the student's GPA was, because there's a lot that goes into a GPA that tells us about that student's, I like to call it sticktuitiveness, right? There's a lot of information that really comes to bear on that. And they may have underperformed on the test, but have a GPA that suggests to us that with a little bit of time, they're going to be fine. We don't want to waste their time in a developmental class. And this is where we've been able to use the ALP to really, really great ends.
So, have each of the departments looked also at how predictive the test is to success? So, in other words, I think it's Dr. Morford who's in the back there. So, if someone fails this test, are they likely to fail the first math course? Or are they... I mean, is the test... A lot of these tests are big business by Pearson testing.
Yeah.
Are we just testing for, because we're mandated by law? Or are they actually predictive of success and what things students need to learn?
How do you and your colleagues generally see that play out?
I mean, it could be English that can answer this as well. I don't know. I mean...
It's Mr. Morford, deference to some of my colleagues. You put in the extra couple of years of work.
Oh, yes. I don't want to upgrade.
You'll get there.
I want to be good.
We did change tests because of that. The COMPAS, for instance...
That was an ACT test, right? The COMPAS?
Yes.
Yes.
The COMPAS, at one point about six years ago, they ran our data and said that it was placing two-thirds of our students correctly, but that no change in our placement test scores would improve that above two-thirds. The Accuplacer is probably slightly better, but what we've done is we put a weighted piece of GPA component in there that we hope will make this a little bit better. But one thing that, when we switched to the Accuplacer, that we said we would do is we assess where things are at in a year or two so that we know, are we doing the best service we can for students and getting them into the correct starting point? And one other thing that's sort of related to that, that we're also starting to do, is students who are in the very... Who are very nearly college-ready on the test now have the option to take the equivalent of the content in the developmental class in their college-level class the same semester if they're in the quantitative reasoning or the statistics pathway. So, we're conscious to the fact that if we could shorten the path, we've given them a much higher chance of success. Things won't go wrong between semesters. And on top of that, they'll get done one semester sooner, so that's another half a year that they can be earning money during their lives. So, it's a huge benefit to students when you can accelerate them.
That's another high-impact practice. So, it's not quite the ALP model. They're called prerequisite courses. So, the student in the same semester is taking basically the remedial course and the college-level course. And that allows us to kind of move that window as to, well, when does developmental end? When does the college level begin? And we're okay with that being a messy, morphy thing, because the end result is by the end of the semester, you've mastered the college-level course.
Are those courses taken simultaneously, the full 16 weeks? Or do you have a shortened...
Well, you guys kind of teach it as an eight-eight, right?
No. Nation-wide, there's all sorts of different models. We are doing what's called a cohort model where we teach over, it's six credits, a whole six credits, but by having it be everyone in the course, we have some flexibility. So, sometimes you need to do a lot of the developmental work to introduce the college-level topic, which you can spend a whole two weeks doing nothing but the developmental work. Other times, you don't need much developmental work at all. You can jump right into the college-level topic. So, we thought it would be difficult to have the non-cohort model where the two classes were in parallel and the eight weeks were up front, because we wanted just-in-time instruction and we wanted the flexibility to, if we have a class that needs a lot of work on a particular algebra topic, we could deliver it.
I need to remind you, so what Jeff's talking about, too, this stuff comes out of the National Center, like the Dana Center for Mathematics. It's some of the stuff that's coming out of Carnegie Mellon. It's some of the best practices coming out of the AACNU. And your faculty here at Henry Ford College are leading the state of Michigan and leading the region in this. So, Jeff is only one of a number of math teachers that have been actually touring nationally, presenting what we're doing as a best practice to others. The ALP program that we discussed here, I know of no college that has it at scale the way we do at the college here. And we're even talking about using that accelerated learning model in our work with students in the English Language Institute, which, again, would put us on the map as the first to do that. So, we are by far leaders in all of this work.
Trustee Elaine.
Again, so, a student comes in, they take the placements. There's no placement for sociology, poli sci, or anything else they might take?
There are basic skill levels that are set, you know, however...
Well, how do we assess those? By putting them into the class and seeing if they succeed? So, I'm just wondering if Becky's ever looked at it and whether we've ever done just a test group. Presumably, the placement tests were put in because we needed them, but have we ever checked that? I mean, what would happen? I mean, what if we just let them take what they wanted?
So, there are entire states that have done that. The state of Florida completely did away with their tests.
And what happened?
They have students failing out of college left and right. But the one thing that they do have is a state system of community colleges that rolls directly into the state system of universities. So, once the students do complete a certain block of coursework at the associate degree level, the whole thing transfers to the university. So, they're working in bigger blocks than we really can. But you're right to ask those questions. I don't know... I shouldn't be pointing. This is the board's audience.
So, if I could just say, as far as English goes, reading and writing, we no longer use straight placement tests. Students knock into the test right when they walk in the door. Instead, we look at their grade point. We look at their ACT. We look at their exposure to reading and writing at high school level and preparation. If a student has no data that can show that they are ready for college-level work, then they might go and take the Accuplacer test. One thing I'll point out about this is that your faculty knows that these tests are not the best way to go about assessing students.
Thank you.
And we are constantly conscious of this, both as we set up our placement for our courses and as students get into our classrooms. We are well-versed in our fields, and so we're looking at our students very closely to make sure they're being served by the courses they went in.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad it's not the cart pulling the horse. I do appreciate that. Then, I'd just like to ask a really simple question. I mean, why are we seeing these results? Is it because we're great? I mean, that's obviously one reason, but is it because Dearborn Public Schools is great? That's another reason. But, I mean, these are cheering results.
They're exceptional. You should be very, very proud of these.
Yeah. So, why is this... Why do we think this is happening?
Okay.
Is it because we're syncing up? Or what is it exactly?
I do think that it is in part the alignment between the high school and the colleges. Most schools, community colleges, that is, crave the kind of close partnership and relationship that we have, really, almost naturally. But I will say that it's also the instruction. So, you have amazingly dedicated teachers in the K-12 system that are looking after the best interest of their students and knowing that few of them will be able to have the life that they want with just a high school education behind them. And then, they come to a college here that I would say rivals the education that you would get at many of the four-year schools. In fact, we've got the teachers who live on the other side of the burn here come over here. They teach the same class, use the same book, it's the same teacher, only it's a fifth the cost, and our students are also in a classroom, not of 300 students, but of 24 students. It's just a recipe for success. But I would say it doesn't come without a tremendous amount of work. And so, I do want to thank the teachers and the faculty in both institutions, because that's what makes it happen.
Great.
Any other questions? I would like to suggest, Dr. Maleko, that, and Mr. Sotkowski, that maybe we have a joint presentation at the P-12 meeting, which is on television to all of our residents, so that we could show that this is a serious intention of getting the two areas to work together to make sure our students are successful and prepared for college and for employment. Is that okay?
The sooner the better, I see.
Okay. Yeah. And thank you, Trustee Elaine, for the idea.
Okay. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Presidential search. Vice President Chadwick.
I think I'll kick it off. Have a seat. No, 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 stand up there. Well, we're getting very close to finally choosing a president for the college, probably by a week from Wednesday night. We should have made that choice. And the board always has the major responsibilities for strategic planning, goal-setting, making sure that the superintendent and the president of the college actually achieve those goals. And we're also very responsible for budget, and we're responsible for a lot of things. But probably one of the most important ones is selecting a president for the college. The CEO makes a huge difference in the direction that the college takes. And so, here we are at the point where next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we will be interviewing, the board will be interviewing, the final candidates. And by Wednesday night, I hope that we will have a decision made. But I asked Ms. Chadwick to come and take us through the process one more time, or should be very proud of the process that we have been following. I think that it's been transparent, it's been objective, and I think it's worthwhile to just review it one more time. And then, I'm going to introduce a consultant that we have who is working with the board to help them and facilitate the process of finally making the choice. So, Ms. Chadwick.
Great, thank you. It is, excuse me, actually hard to believe that next month, kind of the impetus for this search was set in motion with the announcement from Dr. Jensen that he would be retiring in June of 2018. The board certainly wasted no time, certainly is one of your responsibilities, in getting a committee together to begin the request-for-proposal process. And Mary Petlicoff, she chaired that committee, along with Hussein Barry and Jim Thorpe. In June and July and August, we had developed the RFP, and I was kind of hoping that Fred Steiner would be here, because he has been a tremendous help to that subcommittee. He crafted a beautiful, professional request-for-proposal, and he even went an extra step at the end of it. We had eight proposals, and he created a beautiful matrix for us with all of the criteria. And I think it really made it much easier for the board members to actually select AGB search. And with AGB search came Dr. Carlos Hernandez, who was our search consultant and worked with us all throughout this process, except he did complete his duties when the semifinalists were selected. So, he sailed off and we're on our own now. So, then in August, there was another subcommittee that was selected, and that was the search committee with the chair of Dr. Mead, Hussein Barry, again, and trustee Thorpe. The board members made recommendations for the search committee members, and they, I think, each had a number that they recommended. And then, the rest of them were filled with a commitment to adhere to the Constitution with representation there. I have to pause and say that this committee was just outstanding. It was an extremely diverse committee, but they took their responsibilities very, very seriously. We were at the Dearborn Inn for two days straight, from eight in the morning till close to six o'clock at night, and I never heard, I never heard, maybe you did, but I never heard a single complaint out of any of them. Diverse in many ways, race, ethnicity, gender, and most importantly, I think of thinking. So, I think that has paid off in terms of the candidates that we...
And the number was on the committee?
Thirty-three.
Wow.
So, then, in August, we worked with the consultant to finalize the timeline. And I hope you have taken the time to look at our website for the presidential search. And again, I have to give kudos to our director of marketing and communications, Rhonda DeLong, and certainly the web team, because I would go down there and say, you got to update it. You know, when a decision is made, you have to communicate it in a variety of places. And these folks just did an outstanding job, being a step ahead of me. I would go down and say, hey, can you do this? And they'd say, we got it. It's done. So, after we kind of finalized with Dr. Hernandez, kind of what the timeline would be in all of the activities, in September, 21st and 22nd, Dr. Hernandez came on campus, and he met with almost 80 different individuals to begin to develop the profile. And I hope all of you received this. I sent this out last week. This was all developed in-house. This was not developed by the search firm. It was all of the folks here, and I think they did a tremendous job, just in the publication itself. But the committee then, when they met for the first time in September, they took the work of those two days that Dr. Hernandez was here, and they finalized the profile. And the profile kind of lists all of the things that the college does extremely well, the challenges we think we're going to face. And it identified those characteristics, skills, knowledge, abilities, that we feel that we really need in a president. So, the second meeting of the Presidential Advisory Search Committee, we finalized that profile, and we approved the advertising plan. And I do want to just briefly tell you where this was publicized. We went kind of the traditional, the traditional way. The number-one place that everybody goes to look for jobs in higher ed is certainly the Chronicle of Higher Education. So, we had it there inside Higher Education, American Association of Community Colleges, Community College Jobs, Community College Week. But then, we went a step further, and we reached out to those journals that were specific to certain populations. Hispanic Outlook, Journal of Blacks in Higher Education, Women in Higher Education, American Association for Women in Community Colleges. And we even publicized in the local newspapers, one example being the Arab-American News. So, continuing on then with the third meeting of the Presidential Search Committee, that was to choose eight finalists. Dr. Mead and I kind of figured out that it would be difficult, you know, to work with 33 people all at once, so we broke them into groups, which seemed to work nicely, because we felt that there was enough shared dialogue. They had listed eight candidates that they wanted to put forward, and amazingly, I've never in a million years anticipated this, but amazingly, it just went so smooth on that day. So, we walked out with our eight semifinalists. Then, we invited those finalists to come back for the interviews on February 17th and February 18th. And this is where it got a little more complicated. And it will. As the funnel gets smaller, it gets more and more difficult, because you're really looking at the cream of the crop. And I have to tell you that I heard from several different people today. Now, this is after they've only seen three candidates, but one of them, a faculty member, said to me, please express to the board our appreciation for what they've done with this search, because we feel that you have brought some really splendid candidates for us to choose from. And they don't envy your job. They said they're going to have a very difficult job. So, right now, we're in the process of on-campus visits, and I want to thank trustee Nasser for attending them. And so, we're meeting with, it's an eight-hour day. I told, I said to the candidates, it's a test of endurance. They start at eight o'clock in the morning, and they aren't done until close to eight o'clock at night. So, again, they're meeting with the foundation board, Local 71 administrators, students' ambassadors, student council, faculty senate, SSA, our support staff, our engineers. Then, I have faculty in open session. They meet with cabinet as well, and then I have a community session. So, we want to provide as much opportunity for the candidates, or for everyone within the community, to see the candidates. I do want to show you, too... Rhonda, help me out. Where's the... I'm looking for the evaluation.
Oh, the feedback?
Oh, I see it.
Yep.
Okay. What we've also done, too, we have the VITAs out here, we have everything out here, but we also have feedback forms. So, as folks are sitting in the evaluation, they can actually go on and write an evaluation for us. So, I am collecting all of that. I'm able to... These folks did a phenomenal job. I said, I just want to push a button and it'll all come out. And they said, we can make that happen. So, I'll make sure that you receive all of that for every candidate by the 23rd, along with reference checks, background checks, and certainly anything else you need to make this very difficult decision.
The final candidate is Thursday?
Yes.
All right. So, it's Friday that the board will be receiving the packet. It will be delivered to their homes?
It will be electronic.
Oh, it's all electronic?
All electronic.
Hard to access?
No.
You know, for an old man like me?
No.
No?
Nope.
Click the button.
Just one button?
Just one button.
All right.
Yep. So, and I do want to thank Dr. Mead. I've actually worked very closely with Dr. Mead. Of course, we've been friends for a long time ago, and he's really been, I think, tremendous in this process.
Well, thank you.
It's been a pleasure to work with him.
Well, it's a pleasure to work with you. And do I ever appreciate your efforts and the efforts of everybody to make this the most transparent kind of process that we could possibly have, to want everybody to feel very comfortable with the final decision. I know it's not going to be easy for us. So, we will be interviewing Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week, starting at five o'clock. It's open meeting. Everything the board does is in open meetings these days, so that's something that we do. And it will start at five on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. It'll probably go till about nine each day. And on Wednesday, there's just the final candidate to interview, and then the board will go into a session. And it's still, it's all public. And that, this, thank you very much. And this is why I have asked to have a consultant, a facilitator hired, to help us with the process. And his name is Mr. David Chevren, and he's walking up to the podium right now. I asked to have this consultant, because I didn't want to lead it myself, because it would look like it's biased on my part, and also, I want to participate in the process. So, for objectivity, continuation of objectivity and transparency, I've asked David to join us. Now, he is, he'll be our facilitator. He has a bachelor's degree in the social science from the University of Michigan. He has a master's degree in public administration from Western Michigan University. He's served over 56 different public organizations in the state of Michigan, including two community colleges, one Lansing Community College, another Mott Community College, and now us. He assists organizations in strategic planning and facilitates groups in the decision-making process. And this is why I asked him to help us with this process. And he will introduce himself. And do I want to say something about the questions now?
No, we...
Will you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chevren.
Thank you, Chairman Mead.
Thank you for... Chevren.
You got it right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chairman Mead, for that wonderful introduction. Board of Trustees, President Sotowski. It's a, first I say what a pleasure it is for me to be working with Henry Ford College during the final stages of your presidential search. As I was looking through this website and this comprehensive process that you developed, I was really struck by how open and fair and transparent this process is, and how inclusive this process has been, with so many people being involved from throughout the community, throughout the college, and how it's so important, because of all this work that everyone has done, that this body honor this, the fairness and transparency of this process, and to continue to use the same approach as you move forward. You struck by how diverse the search committee is, not only in the popular sense, but because the difference in backgrounds, experience, points of view that they had, how they pulled together, this wonderful profile that Ms. Chadwick shared with you, and how well-thought-out this was that they developed. How public everything's been is truly impressive, and you should be proud, and I'm positive it will lead to a best decision possible. But given that, it's really important that everyone here have an open mind throughout the, to the end of the process. It's only human nature to come into decisions with your own preconceived notions of what should be, in this case, what a president should look like or maybe not look like, and then start to check off those boxes that meet or don't meet your own previous conceived notions of what a president might, should look like. But because of this process being so comprehensive and thorough, to make sure that you wait till the very end through all the interviews and through all the deliberation on next Wednesday night before a decision is made. I'd like to talk about my role in this process. We met last week. Chair Mead...
We met last week, Chair Mead, Ms. Chadwick and I, to design this process, for me to come in today to explain what this process would be, to get your input on any additional interview questions, and to add to the ones that you already have, and to talk about the deliberation meeting next Wednesday and what my role would be during that meeting as well. So at the, for the interviews, we decided it'd be important to stick with the same questions, the 20 questions that were developed by the search committee and used during the first, the previous interviews, and to again ask those same questions. And we talked about, do we want to ask the same questions or not? Does it make sense to come up with a whole new set of questions? And after talking it through, felt that, given that the deliberation that went into developing those questions, just to come up with new questions on the fly wouldn't honor all the work that the search committee did. So to stick with those questions. But to offer the, an opportunity tonight for all of you to add any additional questions, and I think we identified that there might be enough time for three, I guess through the first interviews, some did go more quickly. So we can talk about that in a minute, to see if you have any additional questions that you think are important to ask in addition to these first 20. So that's what we want to do tonight. During the interviews, I'll be sitting in just to observe and to get a sense of how the meetings, how the interviews went. During the deliberation, Becky would again review the process for any people here who are not familiar with it. And then I would lead a brainstorm session, looking at strengths and challenges for each of the candidates. And I'd use a flip chart like this and capture from each of you what would be the strengths of each candidate and what might be some of their challenges. From there, we'd set these up and do what was called a gallery walk, where you'll each have a chance to review those strengths and challenges before taking your seat again and entertaining motions. So I think that's pretty much what we talked about, how to proceed with the deliberation. So I did want to ask if there were any, what we call burning questions?
Just before you get to the burning questions.
Yes, please.
I would like to emphasize that when we are finished interviewing all the candidates, that we take each candidate one at a time, and identify their strengths and challenges so that we have a chance, everybody on the board has a chance to identify what they think are the strengths and challenges of each candidate. Then we can go from there. Instead of jumping to a motion very quickly, I think we should have a chance to really deliberate unless anybody is objecting to that.
No, I like that because that hasn't happened in the past. I want to make sure that everybody gets a full thing.